Good afternoon, everybody. Good afternoon. Good afternoon. Welcome, welcome, welcome. So lovely to see you. I'm Mark Murphy from BBC Radio Suffolk and I'm thrilled to be your host for this afternoon's awards. We're creating the Greenest County Awards and fantastic, fantastic work that you've been doing in your businesses and your homes, in your schools. That means that you are here to celebrate the Greenest County, which is Suffolk today. And I'm so pleased to see so many of you here. It is a real privilege to be hosting this because I get to talk on the radio about all sorts of doom and gloom these days. And so it's lovely to be here to celebrate the really good things in life that we do in Suffolk. And I say this as a boy that was born in Suffolk. I don't think we shout enough about the good things that go on in our lives. And so that's why we're here as well today. And I hope that you'll all go away and shout very, very loudly about the wonderful, amazing things that you're going to hear during the course of the afternoon and tell all your friends. Because it's really, really important that we sing and celebrate the great things in life. And it's also important that we try and raise this wonderful roof in here when we have various people coming up to receive their awards and to make their presentations. And I know you've all had a little bite to eat and a little drink. So, you know, and it's an afternoon, so the last thing we want is you to get sluggish in your seats. So I need you to make as much noise as you possibly can. So can we rehearse that? Will we do that? Is that all right? So shout, holler, cheer and make as much noise as possible on three. One, two, three. You're the best audience today. You really are fantastic. I normally have to do that two or three times, but you're there already. So that's great. So we'll keep that energy up during the course of the afternoon, which is brilliant. Well, welcome to the Hold, which is a building shared by Suffolk County Council and the University of Suffolk that not only is the repository of the county's most important archives, but is also being used to educate our future generations as well. It's been built to high environmental standards and that's a very fitting place to host our awards today. You may have noticed the current exhibition here is Suffolk's Green Story, which examines our relationship with a changing environment as well. If you don't get a chance to see it today, then please make sure that you visit again before the 18th of June and come and use the facilities here. It's a wonderful, wonderful place. It really is. This is the 12th time that we've held the Creating the Greenest County Awards, which were originally launched back in 2007 to not only recognise the environmental contributions of communities, businesses and schools, but also, as I said, to inspire others to do exactly the same. Now, we've got lots of people who have helped to make this possible. And I'd love to introduce now councillor Richard Rout. Now, Richard is deputy leader and cabinet member for finance and environment at Suffolk County Council. He can't be with us today, but give him a big round of applause anyway because he has recorded for you a special message.
Good afternoon and welcome to the 2023 Greenest County Awards. I'm so sorry not to be there with you today. As you'll be aware, our NHS staff are working hard to clear the backlog of procedures that followed the pandemic. And a week ago, I got the call to say, can you come in on the 8th of March? It would have been foolish of me to refuse, but please believe me when I say I would much rather be there with you all today. As we've been approaching these awards, I've been dwelling on what being the Greenest County means to different people. For some, it's simply reaching net zero as quickly as possible. For others, it's ensuring our beautiful countryside is protected and litter free. There are those for whom it centres on biodiversity and wildlife. Increasingly, more people focus on air quality. And for some, it's about our farming community that has shaped Suffolk's beautiful, green landscape over countless generations. There are other aspects too, of course, but the truth, as you all know, is that we'll only get to where we need to be if we embrace all these things and work together. We need to accept what defines Suffolk and continue to enhance it. The county council, like others, is rightly pursuing net zero by 2030. We've allocated £12.8 million to decarbonise our estate. We publish an annual carbon budget and our recorded emissions have fallen 15% since 2020. Like many excellent innovative businesses across Suffolk, we're moving away from fossil fuels, generating our own energy across our estates with PV panels on over 100 buildings. We're moving all of our small vehicles over to EVs by 2025 and have just taken delivery of a new EV pool car fleet. We're installing battery storage, driving down energy use and making reducing emissions part of our core philosophy. This innovation and use of building management systems has seen us reduce gas use in one of our buildings, Constantine House, by 80%. Like others, we're looking at our land and assets and working to increase the level of biodiversity, setting ourselves the target of increasing the level on 30% of our estate by 2030. Between 2020 and 2022 alone, we planted over 200,000 trees. We at the county council are so pleased to host these awards for the 12th time because all of you in the room today have your own inspiring stories to tell. It is people like many of you and the businesses, community groups, charities and schools across our great county that drive the change we need to see. To date, the Greenest County campaign has presented over 150 awards here in Suffolk and received over 1,500 applications. This year, we received 114 entries across nine categories, making it one of the most successful events so far. Thank you so much for being part of that because the impacts of climate change are vast and far reaching. Whether it's snow warnings in Los Angeles or wildfires and flooding here in Suffolk, one thing is clear: it is the least well off and most vulnerable in our communities, here at home and across the globe, that will be hit first and hit hardest. We're already seeing those impacts, coupled with spiralling prices triggered first by the pandemic and now Putin's illegal invasion of Ukraine. The reality for many people is stark. Whether it's an inefficient home that needs upgrading, costly home protection for flooding, living near a busy road with poor air quality, or struggling to afford healthy food, the impacts are there for all to see. In the face of this, net zero is not an expensive luxury. It's not something we should put off while we face these cost of living challenges. Now is the time to redouble our efforts. A cleaner future is not the enemy of the cost of living. It is a huge part of the answer to it. We need more clean homegrown energy to drive down prices. We need well insulated, efficient homes that reduce energy usage and bills. We need cleaner air that improves health outcomes. We need to enhance biodiversity and protect those ecosystems that keep our planet in balance. And importantly, here in Suffolk, a farming county, we need food security and we need to support our inspirational agricultural community. Those of you in the room today know that, but we need to think about those who aren't in the room, those at home perhaps less concerned about the environment. How do we carry that message to them? We've won the intellectual argument, but a battle for hearts and minds still rages. We don't get there by lecturing people. We don't get there by screaming emergency. And we certainly don't get there by disrupting the lives of hardworking people up and down the country. We get there by clearly demonstrating how tackling climate change is the answer to so many of the problems we all recognise and we all face. Everyone wants cheaper bills. Everyone wants cleaner air. Everyone wants access to green space. And everyone should want to drive down food miles and sample Suffolk's excellent local produce. The food you have today is just a snapshot of this. We've salmon from down the road in Orford, sausage rolls with locally sourced meat, Suffolk beef, East Anglian leeks and excellent Suffolk gold cheese in our quiches. Farming is part of our identity here in Suffolk and many of our farmers are at the forefront of environmental innovation in agriculture. We must support them and we must support other local businesses because without them, the changes we need to make will simply be impossible. Finally, I'd like to conclude by thanking all those who helped put together today's event, the exceptional Environment Strategy Team at Suffolk County Council led by Matt Hollis, and of course, the incredible generosity of our sponsors and partners. The awards are sponsored by Vertas, so is Suffolk Building Society, Barnes Construction, Suffolk Growth, and are supported by our partnership with BBC Radio Suffolk, Suffolk Wildlife Trust and Asples. Many thanks to the brilliant Mark Murphy for once again hosting the event. Mark, we miss tuning into you every morning, even if you don't miss the early mornings. Huge thanks also to the massively inspirational Christine Luxton for speaking. Chris is a force of nature on behalf of nature and Suffolk is so fortunate to have her. So please, enjoy the day, enjoy each other's successes, enjoy the excellent food and carry the message of Suffolk's innovation further into your communities. And most importantly, try to carry people with you and stress that in the face of these cost of living challenges, tackling climate change is not unaffordable, quite the opposite. For the sake of those most vulnerable in our communities, for the sake of future generations and for the sake of the county, country and planet we all love, we can't afford not to do it. Thank you for attending and thank you all for the inspiration you bring to Suffolk.
Thank you, Richard. Are we there? Richard mentioned that our keynote speaker today is Christine Luxton. Now Christine is the chief executive of the Suffolk Wildlife Trust and we are so lucky and privileged to have such a fantastic trust here in Suffolk that is looking after our countryside and continually trying to find new areas to look after and protect. And so would you give Christine, please, as our keynote speaker today, a big round of applause?
Thank you, Mark. And gosh, it feels like being interrogated about here. Apologies if I squint at you all. So it's brilliant to be here and what's even more exciting is to see how many familiar and friendly faces there are here today. I think, as Mark said, this has become something of an annual highlight in Suffolk's calendar. And we can easily take it for granted that these Greenest County Awards are something that happen everywhere. But let me tell you, I'm part of a network with the Wildlife Trust. Every county has a wildlife trust. Not every county has a Greenest County Award. So our county council are really taking the lead here. So, you know, we should be proud of that and recognise that today's special and the leadership that's happening. So on that, sort of thinking about being here every year, I got thinking about time. And it's a funny thing, time, isn't it? Time flies and then it seems such a long time ago when you've been back for a week off holiday and it feels like forever. And thinking, three years ago, right now, this time of year, three years ago, we were right at the start of a journey that none of us expected to have to make. We were just about to go into the coronavirus lockdowns. It's kind of hard to picture the three years. But it was at the end of this month. And if you think back, you know, it was a time of extraordinary hardship and extraordinary sadness for individuals, for the country. But if you ever think back to it and remember it, it was also the most extraordinary spring. It was a time that people reflected on, that perhaps they had heard birdsong, maybe heard it for the first time, or maybe they just noticed it amongst the busyness of life. People began to cherish nature. We began to think, maybe this is a change in society. Are we going to be able to hold on to this beyond the pandemic? And really, for the first time in years, it felt like there was, amidst all the doom, there was hope for the natural world. And hope is something that's really important with these awards. And I don't know about you, but there is so much, and people have said to me, there's so much doom and gloom in the news, that actually you can feel so weighed down by it and overwhelmed by it. What difference can I make? And that's what I want to talk about a bit today really, for Suffolk Wildlife Trust and our role. But going back to that spring, if I can point in the right direction, I've already managed to click it twice and go wrong. Thinking back to that spring that everybody was so wowed by, one of the things that happened during the pandemic was that Suffolk Wildlife Trust celebrated our 60th anniversary. So we've been here 60 years, but that spring that people were so wowed by was a vastly diminished spring from the spring that we would have had 60 years ago when the trust was founded. And thinking about time and how time ticks on, I think the thing that I find really shocking is that it's in my lifetime that so much has been lost. So in my lifetime that we've lost 60% of our, of the volume of our animals and our plants and our birds. 44 million birds is the estimate that are no longer in our countryside in Britain that were there 50 years ago. It's absolutely shocking. So that, that spring that we were so wowed by, just imagine how it could be. And so we, like many businesses and very charities, came back from the pandemic and started to reset our clock and think about, so what are we going to do now? What's the next 60 years for the trust? And we started thinking about what our focus would be to 2030. And we realised that what we needed to do was change our narrative a bit, from being a conservation organisation to really, really being firm about the fact that holding the line about conserving is no longer enough, that what we have got to do, as well as protecting the nature that we've got, that holding the line, we have got to bring back what's been lost. And that's our challenge now. But the challenge is we've got to do it fast. And that's really for us, what I want to talk a little bit about today. So thinking about time, really, I suppose, you could say it's turning back the clock, but of course we can never replace what's lost. It will be something different, but it will still be rich and exciting and it will be Suffolk's. So this is what gives me hope. So as part of doing that resetting the clock, we did a bit of a survey and we went out in Suffolk, and we got YouGov to do it, to find out, well, are we barking up, you know, a tree here on our own or is this, is this something that everyone's with us? And really, perhaps not surprisingly, 91% of people in Suffolk that we asked told us they were interested in nature. We then pushed them a little bit further and 50% said they were very interested. And we pushed them a little bit further and what became clear is that people were interested not just in nature, but in doing something. And it's that translating that interest into doing which is the key and which all of us in this room and what Suffolk Wildlife Trust is all about is turning that interest into action. It doesn't mean we're going to forget our great and glorious past, all the stuff that all the people who've come before me have done. So this is Suffolk Wildlife Trust as you know it and the message of protecting what we have, our 50 nature reserves, the most astonishing places, some of the best bits of Suffolk, together with the AOMBs that are on there and the nature reserves run by other organisations. And we will keep adding to them. So we've got Martisham Wilds, just on the, on the Deben estuary, right next to Martisham Church. We're just in the process, we've just bought this, we're going to rewild it. It's the most astonishing place. It's got all of the estuary, the mudflats, all the waving birds you would expect on an internationally designated estuary, but within a stone's throw of vast numbers of people who live in Martisham. So, you know, there's real hope for us. We're still sticking to the stuff the trust has always done, but we're looking beyond that and thinking about what can we do to bring back what we've lost. And it's not just at Martisham. Who was watching Countryfile on Sunday night? With 6 million other people. 6 million people heard us talking about Suffolk Wildlife Trust's work at Hazelwood Marshes. This is a great example of what I'm talking about when we're talking about bringing nature back. Hazelwood Marshes in 2013 was grazing marsh. We had a big storm surge, some of you will remember it, went all up the coast. We were losing, nature reserves were going underwater, communities were flooded. And the river wall that holds Hazelwood Marshes and kept it as dry grazing marsh, that breached and became clear that actually, holding the line was not possible. What we needed to do was step back and let nature take the lead, put our trust in nature to create something new, something different and allow nature to play its part in the, for the county. And what we had then now was something astonishing with the wetland that was on Countryfile. But for me, one of the things that that really tells us, and thinking about today being International Women's Day, is what we did there is we had to put our faith in nature. You know, it's Mother Nature, Mother knows best. We've lost that over the years. That's what we really need to reclaim now. If we are going to bring nature back, we've got to put our faith in nature. So what does that mean? Thinking about landscape, that landscape and how do we bring back nature, it's joining up the dots. All those nature reserves was other amazing sites. We need to do a join the dots exercise. So, and it's all based on science. You'll have all heard this, Professor Lawton 10 years ago gave us these principles and what he said is to bring nature back, we need to connect up the very special places and we need to be buffering them and we need to have more of them. And the mantra that came out of that was more, bigger, better, joined up. And it makes sense. Bigger places joined up, more of them, that's going to be better for nature. And we've been working on that principle and the county council will be working on that principle when they're trying to do the Nature Recovery Network maps. But what was really, really interesting about the work that Professor Lawton did was that he said, of all of those, of the more, the bigger, the better and the joined up, the most important is more. And I think that's really interesting culturally because we are not programmed to ask for more, are we? Society, when you're a child, you don't ask for more. So we just haven't and we've put up with this gradual depletion of nature. We've not been bold and bolshy enough and that's what we need. That's what the trust is going to be. We're going to be a bit more gutsy, a bit more vocal. We need more and we've got to shirk that cultural inhibition that we might have. And how does that more fit in? What do we mean by more? How much more do we need? Well, when you think, when you look at the science and the science of where does nature need to get to? Nature needs to get to 30% of land and sea in recovery to be able to function effectively. That's science that's been done internationally, so it's a global target now, it's a UK target and we are really championing it here in Suffolk, as are the county council. And when you look at this map of Suffolk, so the map of Suffolk with the different types of land use mapped on it, you can really see the challenge that we've got. At the moment, about 15% of Suffolk is in good condition for nature, it's really delivering on nature. So we've got a long way to go. We need to double that. And of course, we've got to balance, as Richard said, we've got to balance all the other land uses that we've got. So this is going to be about working together. It's about finding more space for nature, but it's about that connectivity. And within that connectivity, then you get more abundance, more abundance of nature. That's that dawn chorus that we were talking about, that spring at the beginning. And maps are really useful for this, to think about what are the changes, what's happened over that time. This is another one that's from my lifetime that's shocking. I was a toddler at this point. So this map is from the 1930s. This is Bradfield Woods, a national nature reserve in the centre of the county. So keep your eye on the arrow. So this is 1930. And this is an aerial photo now. You spot the difference? 1930 and now. That half of Bradfield Woods, considered to be one of the top three woodlands in terms of its richness for nature, that was lost in the early 1970s in my lifetime. That should, should never happen. It was a turning point for nature. It was the last of the big woodland clearances. But actually, we're in a place again now in society where that's beginning to happen again. So what I'm saying to you is, is not that we can replace Bradfield Woods. We can't replace those ancient, when we're talking about bringing nature back, we can't restore ancient woodland. That's the protecting what we've got, but we need to create more space for nature, give, put our faith in, in Mother Nature to, to decide what grows there and to give it more, more connectivity through the work that we are all doing. So this was 1931, this is nowadays, and this is 2013, continuing that, that theme of looking at the clock. This is putting the Lawton principles into practice. So to keep the same scale, the map's a little bit, say, a little bit hard to see, but if I turn around here, just here, the red were existing hedges, the green were, sorry, the green is existing hedges and the red is hedges we've put back in in 2013 to create the connectivity between Bradfield Woods and these woodlands over here for dormouse. That's a dormouse nest. That's what we're trying to find in the hedges and that's what we are 10 years on, are finding in the hedges. This is what I'm talking about when I say bringing nature back, creating connectivity, making more space for nature. And we can all do that. We can all play our part in putting that map back together. So back to this, this is our challenge, but we're all in it together. If we're going to achieve that 30%, you know, how are we going to do it? This was us sitting down with, with a mapping system one afternoon, thinking, how does more, how does bringing nature back, how does that work for Suffolk? What could we do? So we've got our map showing us what's lost, but we've got maps that can show us the future. So all we did here, we took those dots, remember that I talked about joining the dots? We put a buffer around them, a buffer of 500 metres down here, around each of our nature reserves. We put them along our river valleys, we put them around some of the other rich sites that are owned by, by other landowners, by other NGOs. And suddenly, you can begin to see how just by buffering, by thinking and connecting those other bits of habitat, how that 30% becomes possible when you start breaking it down. And so what we could be doing, in the same way that it was lost, we didn't lose all those birds overnight, we lost them over 50 years, in the same way it was lost, so we can bring nature back piece by piece. And that's not a new story, is it? You're probably sitting there thinking, I've heard all this before. What are you saying? Every little helps. Of course it does, we've heard it all before. When I was a student, the big phrase, think global, act local. We need to recycle here, reinvent the wheel. You know, this is what we need to do. If we focus on what we can do in Suffolk, then we are playing our, playing our part in solving, solving the global issues. So, you know, every little helps. Every journey begins with that first step. We need to hold on to that because otherwise, scale of the problem can be so big that we'll be paralysed by it and never get anywhere. So thinking about that more, we want more space for nature, but the more also, in terms of greed, applies to us, we want more people, more people doing their bit. And in the same way that we've got that 30% target that comes from ecological science, we've got a one in four target that we're aiming for that comes from social science. And I find this really encouraging because one in four is a tipping point. The tipping point at which something that is a little bit on the edge of society, that you are the person who's different, when you get to one in four people behaving like that, it shifts from being unusual to being the norm. One in four isn't that many. In Suffolk, it's 200,000 people. So if we can get 200,000 people on nature's side, we will have reached that tipping point that shifts us from nature being something that's a nice to have. And Richard said, it's not a nice to have. We need nature for our economy, for our health, for our wellbeing. Moves it from being a nice to have to being something that is embedded in our day to day. So one in four, that's what we need to aim for. And this is how then, if we had one in four people playing their part, thinking about that connectivity, how each of us in our own communities, the different bits we're working on, how they all piece together and contribute to that joining the dots and to that map that we were talking about. And how does that one in four really work when you start pulling that map, this map, if we zoom in closer to individual communities? Think about some of the things that we've heard before about the Greens County Awards. It could be a hedgehog street, you and your neighbours all connecting up your, your garden so hedgehogs can move through. It could be the Swiss project that's doing an amazing job of putting swift boxes up all around the county. It could be with the hoverflies, thinking about our pollinators. That one in four could be the tipping point where everyone in your street has left their front garden to grow lawn and the person who's getting the lawnmower out is the one who's different. Imagine that, when people look over the fence, not to say, are you going to mow your lawn, to, you're mowing your lawn. That's the change we need to get. And it's possible, it's within our reach. And we know from the science, from the connectivity, from the doing more, that not only is it good for people and is manageable, it makes a genuine impact for nature and contributes to our 30%. So, one in four, 30%. But even when you are one of that one in four, if you are the first person on your street who's making a hole in your fence for hedgehogs, you're the first one to be letting their garden, their front lawn grow longer, it can feel really lonely. It can be really challenging. You know, you can feel like a lone voice. So what we want to do now, what we are really trying to champion, is this idea of, as part of that one in four, trying to develop ourselves as Suffolk into a movement for nature that we can call Team Wilder. And other counties are doing the same, Team Wilder. So everything that we do comes under this umbrella. So everything that we do comes under this umbrella. And then you can put, put that on the map saying what you're doing, your neighbours can do that, the next village can do it, the next school can do it, the next business can do it. And suddenly you realise you're not a voice in the wilderness. And suddenly you start seeing how what you are doing connects into what somebody else is doing and it becomes a social network by which you can share ideas and learn from each other. And that's what we've just begun to do. And my rallying call to you today is to go away, have a look on our website at suffolkwildlifetrust.org and look at Team Wilder and put your actions on the map. So at the moment, it's quite a simple Google, Google system. We've got something a bit more sophisticated in development, but it's capturing those stories, capturing the impact and creating our own set of dots on the map that are dots showing everything people are doing for nature that we can then overlay over those dots showing where our most nature-rich places are. And suddenly we have that connectivity, we have the move towards the 30% that we've been looking for. So, finishing off, where do we go from here? We've got an amazing room full of people. We've got people here already championing nature in, in your, your part of the county. So my, my ask to you, my rallying call, if you can, please think about that bringing nature back. Think about when you go away from here today, how what you're doing contributes to that 30%, how you are helping us reach that one in four tipping point of people playing their part for nature. And let's go away and shirk that, that not asking for more and, and demand it for Suffolk. So we do more, we demand more of our politicians, we demand more of our businesses to listen and we inspire more people to go away and play their part too. And if we can do that, we really can, we really can bring nature back. Thank you.
Christine, thank you very much. That was absolutely inspiring. And, and sometimes when you see the news and you see what's happening around the world and you can be really kind of daunted and think, well, I can't do anything. What, what can I do to make a difference? Well, you can make a difference and you, you know this because you're already doing it. And our challenge is to go and tell everybody else how they can make a difference as well in their back gardens. I've got swift boxes up on the back of the house, four years, they still haven't gone in. I was talking about it to someone earlier, saying, please remember the swifts come into the boxes. And we've got hedgehogs. We know we've got hedgehogs in the garden. The thrill of when the outside light kept coming on and we thought, oh, it must be a cat. And then went out one night and there was Nigel the hedgehog. And, you know, we caught him on the webcam and it was just brilliant. And so in your gardens, schools, businesses, you know, please, you can make a difference. You really can. I'd like to introduce now Sarah Pennock, who's Head of Quality and Sustainability for Vertas, this year's gold sponsor of the event, who's here to, to give us a, a little introduction. Give her a big round of applause, everybody. This is Sarah.
Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Sarah Pennock and I'm the Group Head of Quality and Sustainability at the Vertas Group. We are the gold sponsor of the event today and we are delighted to be here to meet you and to hear about the wonderful things that you're doing in your organisation. And thank you for the opportunity to give me a few minutes to just tell you about some of the great things we've been doing in Vertas in the past year. So I won't talk to you about all of the stuff that you can see on the screen here, but our key starting point was to come up with a sustainability strategy which outlined four key themes. The first one is waste and recycling. So a couple that I do just want to point out that we're extremely proud of is implementing a recycling scheme which saved over 1.4 million pieces of single-use plastic by, by switching it to reusable pots and wooden cutlery. And that saved us 21.3 tonnes of carbon. So we were really proud of that particular one. The next of our themes was energy and carbon management. And again, a couple of examples there of some of the changes we've made. But I wanted to point out that we have planted 2,700 trees. And another initiative that we're especially proud of in the last year is introducing meat-free Mondays. And that initiative has reduced meat in schools by 20%. The next of our themes was travel and transport, a huge challenge for us in Vertas as it is in many organisations. Couple of things that we've made that I wanted to point out is a salary sacrifice scheme, giving all colleagues the opportunity to purchase an electric vehicle via Tuskia. And to complement that scheme, we've completely transformed our staff car park. We've switched it up and we've installed nine UV charging points and offered free parking for any colleague on a first-come, first-served basis if they have an electric vehicle, which has complemented the scheme. And then lastly of our themes was the work that we've been doing with our supply chain and working with our suppliers to understand what changes they're making, their sort of sustainable improvement programme alongside their carbon footprint. Proud to say that today we have contacted 64% of them. So a huge achievement, still a lot to be done. And then lastly, our 10 steps to net zero. This is something that kind of drives it behind the scenes. We've worked with a fantastic organisation called Planet Mark and they've helped us to outline and look at a bit of a roadmap taking us to 2030 and further to 2050 and the changes year on year that we need to make in our organisation, what that looks like and if it's achievable, we believe it is. So I'll leave it there. The future is challenging. There are huge hurdles for all of us, but we have overcome some amazing challenges and we've made big changes to date. And I think that's about celebrating that today. So thank you so much for listening. Really looking forward to hearing about what's going on in your organisations and I'm looking forward to us working together, sharing the experience, sharing the knowledge, what's worked, what are the lessons and working together in, in the Suffolk community, community to ultimately achieving these goals. So thank you very much and best of luck to everyone with the awards.
Sarah, thank you very much. It's inspiring, isn't it? When you, when you see and hear what's being done, it's quite, quite amazing. We have some trophies down the front here, okay? Lots of wonderful trophies which will be handed out this afternoon. And I want to say a very big special thank you to, to Gail Hatley, who has handmade these trophies herself. Where are you, Gail? Give us a little wave. Right at the very back. Brilliant. Based in Sudbury and I think does day courses, is that right? Still doing those? Excellent. We are live streaming the event as well, by the way, today. So there's a camera there, camera's behind. So if you want to give everybody who's watching a little wave, okay? There we are. Don't be on your best behaviour, don't worry about the cameras. And if you want to tweet, the hashtag is creating the greenest county. So let's see if we can't get that trending on Twitter during the course of the afternoon. So are you ready? Oh dear. Where was that energy that we had earlier? Are you ready? Oh, thank goodness for that. Without further ado, let's start presenting the awards. I've been told that this year, and I know this year, was particularly hard to judge as not only was the standard of entries incredibly high, but we had such a large number of schools, businesses and communities wanting to take part in the event. We'll start with the greenest school category. We had such a huge and massive response from Suffolk Schools with 22 entries in total. Therefore, we have, for the very first time, split the category into two. So we'll begin with the greenest high school. And could I invite Nadine Coleman from Vertas to come and join us on stage? Nadine, to present our first award. And the nominations are Store Valley Community School. If you hear yourselves shout, okay, honest? Store Valley Community School. Depton Care Farm. The Sybil Andrews Academy. Excellent. More of that, please, come on through the afternoon. Let's hear all about the nominees.
We are at Depton Care Farm. We work here looking after the animals and the crops.
We learn about farming, gardening and environmental.
We are helping Suffolk become the greenest county by.
We're using and recycling our rubbish.
Harvesting rainwater to the planet.
Selling our locally grown food to local people.
We are reducing the carbon footprint of our farm and spreading that impact across the Wilder community.
We are the climate emergency committee at Store Valley Community School.
We are ambitious and determined to make a difference.
We raise money for green projects by having an annual green day.
We plant trees on the school grounds to create a green corridor for wildlife.
We're helping our local community plant 900 trees for new woods.
We grow insect-friendly plants.
We're setting up an allotment to grow our own veg.
We do no-mow-mate to help our pollinators.
This is how we are helping to create the greenest county.
Here at Sybil Andrews Academy in Berwickst Edmonds, we would like to share with you what we have achieved over the last academic year. The school held a greener careers week, planted over 100 trees around school, recycled plastic to use in our DT lessons, won gold at the Berry and Bloom Awards, started a tree nursery, learnt about the importance of bees, bugs, bats and beetroot, planted 4,000 crocus bulbs, started an eco club, growing our own vegetables and using them in our school kitchen and improving mental health, the list is endless. Sybil Andrews is making a difference today for a better tomorrow.
Fantastic. Our nominees, everybody. So we have the gold envelope with, I think it deserves a little.
And the winner is Sybil Andrews Academy.
The Sybil Andrews Academy, come and join us on stage. Well done, everybody. Oh, it's better than the Oscars, isn't it? Would one of you like to say a little word or two about winning the award? Come on, there has to be a volunteer amongst you. Yeah? Anybody fancy it? If not, don't worry.
We've been plant, we have gardening, we've done lots of planting, we grow our own vegetables. We do, we had the treehouse in coming and we've planted lots of trees on the school grounds.
That's fantastic. And I mentioned for beetroot, I heard on there. Yeah. So you're growing vegetables and enjoying all of that? Yeah, it's fantastic. What, what sort of wildlife have you had coming in?
I'm not sure.
What did we recently take part in? We recently took part in the Big Bird Watch.
Oh, brilliant. Fantastic.
And recently we've been growing flowers out of upcycled materials. Ollie, what?
So we, me and Pranay put flowers in a barbecue and others put in some parts in toilets and sinks, just to upcycle used materials that would otherwise go as a landfill and skip.
Oh, that's fantastic. Give them a big round of applause, ladies and gentlemen. Paul's going to take their photograph. Let me tell you a little bit more about the, the winning entry. The children showed an outstanding approach towards embedding sustainability into the school across all aspects of the curriculum and community life. They have ambitious plans and engage with other local primary schools, businesses and the community. So, so well done to the Sybil Andrews Academy. Fantastic. Well done, guys. Thank you very much. Nadine, I want you to stay there because I, I want to also recognise, and I think it's really important we do this, recognise the achievements of the highly commended schools as well, who are definitely exemplars for others to follow. As we said, it was a huge entry today. So would you please give a big round of applause and come and join us on stage? Store Valley Community School and the Depton Care Farm, come and join us. Fantastic. Well done, guys. Thank you very, very much. Well done. Brilliant. Absolutely brilliant. Well done as they make their way back to their seats. If you are lucky enough to win today and you fancy uttering a word or two, that would be lovely, but you don't have to. But if you do, wander over to the lectern over there and we'll be able to hear you. Let's now move on to celebrate the work of primary schools across the county to support the next generation to be our future sustainability leaders. So next up, we have the Greenest Primary School and Nadine is going to come back on stage again and help us with this one. The nominations are, and again, make some noise for our nominees, Birchwood Primary School. The Federation of Fairfield Infant and Colneese Junior. Summerlaton Primary School. And to Margaret's Primary Academy. Let's have a little look and see what they've been doing.
Bradford Primary School wants to make stuff the greenest county by recycling inside.
Our now is by everyone in our local area.
We have a huge vegetable garden.
We have our own chickens in rare breed banter.
This is the Suffolk Chatter. Don't forget our bees.
Ask how much blood the Suffolk Punches. Did you know they're a dangerous species?
And we always try to travel to source the same.
We are the Federation of Fairfield and Colneese.
Last year we were really sad to hear that lots of trees are going to be chopped down to make green for each hut.
Our eco warriors made a video to campaign against this and organised a vote across our schools.
We were delighted that we managed to persuade each Suffolk Council to save the woodland area.
Due to our passion for saving the trees, we were invited to the site to help with the planting of 30 mature trees with 300 whips.
Our school support groups such as Let Free Felixda.
We, and we have great eco council who work hard, hard to spread the message in our community of the importance of looking after the planet.
Our children are seven in the primary school.
Our schools have a special connection with the countryside for most of the year.
Our school sits within the Summerlaton Hall at the Woodland.
Our school sits within the Summerlaton Hall of Existence.
We have been working hard with Lawrence and Lathan and his Wild East Charity to rewild parks of our school and community.
We love growing fruit and vegetables to use in our lessons and cook our eatery. What we don't use, we give away to our families.
We love nature and spot different wildlife, wildlife in our learning garden.
We want to help Suffolk to become the greenest county so each future generation can benefit from a healthier and respectful relationship with nature.
We are St Margaret's Primary Academy Lowestoft. We love getting the whole school and local community involved in eco awareness days like litter picking, recycling and energy saving.
We do daily energy checks and paper checks in our classrooms.
We make sure there is daily litter picking on a paper.
We work hard to promote biodiversity across our school areas, planting trees and rewilding areas as well as creating new habitats.
We want to be the greatest school in the county, hooray!
Fantastic, give them a big round of applause, that's wonderful. So, Madine's got the envelope, a little.
And the winner is Birchwood Primary School.
Birchwood Primary School, come on down. Congratulations Birchwood Primary School. Would one of you like to just tell us a little bit more about what you've been up to in front of the mic?
We just want to say a big thank you and that we are all very grateful.
Brilliant. Wonderful. Photo time, photo time over there. Let me tell you a bit more about Birchwood Primary School. The children have a fantastic amount of activities in place, many of which involve the local community and reach into family life. The wide range of activities embeds a strong sense of sustainability across the school and the local community. It's clearly a real aspect of the school's culture and core values. So well done to Birchwood Primary, our winners in this category, smiling away, having their photographs taken. Cheesy grins everybody, cheesy grins. Cheese grommet. Brilliant, well done. Congratulations Birchwood Primary. Now it's photo time and certificate time for our other nominations in this category. So please, would you wander over to have your photograph taken? The Federation of Fairfield Infant and Colneese Junior, Summerlaton Primary School and St Margaret's Primary Academy, come and join us. Go on everybody. Big smiles. Fantastic, well done guys. Next. Mr Paul taking the pictures everybody as well. Hello Paul. Hello. Oh, they've got big grins. Thank you Madine, thank you very much. Well done to all of our schools, congratulations, absolutely brilliant, really great. We move on now to the greenest small business. And could I invite councillor Melanie Vigo de Galladoro from Suffolk County Council to join us on stage to present the award for the greenest small business? This award celebrates small businesses whose actions have had a significant and clear, positive environmental impact in their own operations and beyond. The nominations are the Debton Care Farm. Come on. Wakelands. The Woolley Project Management Limited. And the Eco Carriers Beriston Edmonds. Let's have a look at our nominees. Oh, hold on, not yet.
We are Debton Care Farm, a small business and a charity run by Millennium Farm Trust. We provide learning programmes and work opportunities in agriculture, horticulture and environmental projects for people with additional needs. Environmental issues are very important to the ethos of how we run the farm, our learning programmes and our business. Enabling our service users to become more environmentally aware, giving them the knowledge to make environmentally friendly choices and the tools to make a real difference to their lives is key to how we run our small business.
Eco Carriers is a not-for-profit community benefit society, aiming to promote and facilitate increased cycling over car and van use in Beriston Edmonds and surrounding villages to help tackle climate change. We provide a same-day zero emissions courier delivery service for businesses and individuals, and our fleet of bicycles, cargo bikes and trailer can carry anything from a letter to a three-piece suite. If it will fit in an estate car, we can take it.
At Wakelands, our organic agro-forestry allows us to grow unusual crops such as lentils and hemp without the agricultural chemicals that pollute our rivers, while also helping to tackle the climate and biodiversity crises. Last week, we installed three new heat pumps to ensure our buildings are heated in the most carbon-friendly way. This week, we're working with the Suffolk Wildlife Trust to create new ponds for Great Kristic Newts and Turtle Doves. During the summer, we'll be holding bird walks, tree walks and open days, including a butterfly day and a community apple day, to welcome people wanting to see agro-ecological farming in action and to have some fun.
Climate change demands a drastic change of lifestyle for everyone on the planet. Our homes are fundamental. Woolley, zero carbon in how we operate, promotes this change in all development work. Master planned with walkable neighbourhoods, beautiful places for building communities and green biodiverse open spaces. Our quest to build zero carbon homes is led by building and showcasing to Suffolk and the world our own autonomous home at no extra cost.
Fantastic, our nominees ladies and gentlemen, wonderful. So fill the tension up a little bit, can we?
Thank you for the opportunity to present this award. Small businesses are the backbone of Suffolk's economy, not only providing excellent products, services and employment opportunities, but also at the forefront of driving innovation and new ways of doing business. At Suffolk County Council, we have been supporting these businesses to become more sustainable for many years, providing advice and grants to hundreds of organisations via the Business Energy Efficiency Anglia and supporting the Carbon Charter, a thriving network of businesses sharing advice and learning on our journey to net zero. I'm pleased to see such a high calibre of entry to this category. Well done to everybody who entered, but there can only be one winner. And the winner is? Debton Care Farm.
What's your game?
Thank you for the nomination and for us winning, we appreciate it and we love the Care Farm.
Oh brilliant, oh fantastic. And how long have you been going there?
I've been going there for, it will be nearly three years on the, in September. And I go, I started off with just one day, but now I go two days a week.
And what's so good about it, what do you like the most?
I love the animals and all my friends here and the fact that we grow produce and sell it and that to the wider community.
Brilliant, well you're amazing, well done, congratulations. Photo time. Well, they ticked every possible box to win this award. It is run with the ethos of an organic farm, but with incredible benefits for both the education and community aspects. The Care Farm also helps with biodiversity by growing unusual strains of vegetables and a wide range of trees in the orchard. They also have a well-thought-out and ambitious strategic plan to move forward over the next few years. Well done, congratulations, fantastic achievement. I'd like also now to invite up onto the stage area to have their photographs taken and to receive their certificates. Please join us Wakelands, Woolley Project Management Limited and Eco Carriers Beriston Edmonds, come and join us. Well done. These have been wonderful mementos of today and a wonderful achievement being here as well as our nominees. Hugely competitive field this year, fantastic. If you haven't come up for your certificate yet, practise your smiles, okay? I'm sure you're ready. Brilliant, congratulations, well done. Melanie, thank you very much as well. Next up, we have green business. And could I please welcome, give them a big round of applause, Mark Bailey from Barnes Construction to present the Greenest Business Award. Come and join us Mark. Good to see you, thank you very much for your support. This award celebrates larger businesses whose actions have had a significant and clear and positive environmental impact, not only on their own operations, but also influencing their supply chain and their customers too. The nominations are Aaron's Services Limited. And the University of Suffolk. Let's hear a little bit about them.
Hi, my name's David Lumis, managing director for Aaron's Services. We're a proud local heating contractor established in Creating St Mary in 1985, working from just one van in the family home. Today, we employ over 500 people and host a vehicle fleet of over 380 vehicles. From our offices in Stowe Market, we look after much of Suffolk's social housing needs, helping local authorities and housing associations select green heating systems and ensuring our operations meet our net zero targets.
Sustainability has been a cornerstone of the University of Suffolk's visions and values since its inception in 2007. Whilst the United Nations Sustainable Development Goals are central to our strategic growth and delivery, in 2020, we declared a climate emergency, which through our carbon biodiversity waste procurement and travel action plans, we are working across schools and directorates to implement in order to achieve carbon neutrality by 2030 and a net zero campus across all scopes by 2050.
Our nominees ladies and gentlemen, big round of applause. You need the sound effect, don't you really, before you open the envelope? Are you ready?
Well, there were some fabulous entries into this, we've only seen two of them, but we marked four or five businesses and I know that there are very many more went into it. Barnes Construction are delighted to support the Creating the Greenest County awards again. And I'm delighted to let you know that the University of Suffolk is the winner.
The University of Suffolk. Just a very, very quick word before we let you go off for your photograph, how does it feel?
Thank you so much, we've got so much work still to do, so this is really just the beginning for us, so I hope I can take this back into our organisation and it will give us great encouragement to keep going in the way we are and do more and create a much more healthy environment for Suffolk and the young people that we educate.
And you're good neighbours as well, you do a lot around the local area, don't you here?
Yes, that's super important. Our partnerships, whether it's with community groups or indeed with business partners, we couldn't do it without the work that we do collaborating and that's, that's a huge part of meeting our sustainability ambitions.
Well, I hope you've got a mantelpiece big enough to put that on, so congratulations, well done, the University of Suffolk. Let me tell you a bit more about why they won the award. This is an organisation that has really got to grips with its net zero ambition. They demonstrate a consistent vision for environmental excellence and a broad range of environmental improvements, and have achieved a 76% reduction in carbon emissions since 2009/10. They take a really comprehensive approach that includes renewable energy and efficiency measures, but also green roofs, EV salary sacrifice and a full lifecycle approach as well to procurement. And a big round of applause please again for. And a big round of applause please again for another brilliant nominee, runner up today, Aaron's Services Limited. Straight smiles, well done, congratulations. Mark, thank you. Now our next presenter on stage to sponsor this next award, would you give a big round of applause please? It's the Greenest Community and from the Suffolk Building Society to present the award for the Greenest Community, it's Richard Norrington. Nice to see you, Richard. This award recognises that people working together to identify issues and develop local solutions is critical to our goal to create the greenest county and a vital cog in the machine to live in a more sustainable world. We have to work together. The nominations are the Berry Bike Train. And Green Exworth. Let's have a little look and find out some more about them.
My name is Nancy, I wish the bike train was actually every single day even if it's raining. And we like cycling to school in a community, it's a good way for access.
The bike crew is a great idea because it saves money on petrol, it saves the planet, teaches the kids road safety and also get home quicker than I'd do if I used the car.
Green Exworth, established during lockdown, marries the need for greater biodiversity with human scale planning and development. We seek to enhance the natural features of our community and ensure that new development is sympathetic to human and natural life and landscape. Constrained by village bypasses, we seek ways of maximising natural features within it and links to the countryside. All of this whilst working to reduce energy use and pollution and involving the wider community.
Agree, the Greenest Community. Time for that drum roll, that little kind of...
Well, this is a great honour to make this award on behalf of Suffolk Building Society. The Suffolk Building Society were a mutual organisation, which means were run by members, not by shareholders, and were based on three values and one of those values is community. So it's particularly appropriate that I'm lucky enough to present the Green Community Award mark. So here we go, in the envelope. I hope there's something in there, here it is, here it is. And the winner is Berry Bike Train.
So congratulations, well done. Who's going to, hello, well volunteered, well volunteered. How does it feel to be holding that?
I'm overwhelmed, no, it's wonderful. The bike train, we've been on a, it's silly to say, a journey, but we have really. We started last year and it's the kids really that get us up early in the morning, rain or shine, and they join us, we've got wonderful volunteers as well and the schools have taken their part, so it's really a community effort and we love it.
So on a practical level, how does it work?
We have a set route, it's a group ride, it's a timetable, the families join in with us nearest to where they live, you know, on the route, they get on board with their bikes and our riders marshal the junctions and make it safe so that we all arrive in one piece on time.
Oh, that's fantastic, it was a shame you have to do it, but what a great initiative to do it and to give people confidence I would think as well, to, you know, to strike out on their own perhaps.
Yeah, the cycling infrastructure in Berry is not brilliant in places and it really gives families the confidence to cycle to school.
Well done, congratulations, give them a big round of applause, well done. This is an exciting and active new initiative involving families across the generations, reducing traffic and encouraging alternative transport. They present the whole biking package to involve health, wellbeing, air quality and reducing fossil fuels which promote biking for life habits and lessons for the future. It's a great initiative. Well done, congratulations. And ladies and gentlemen as well, because everyone's a winner here today, you are all amazing, can I please invite the highly commended Green Exworth to come and join us as well? Come and join us, Green Exworth. Well done, Green Exworth. Next, our Waste Reduction and Recycling Award. Could you please give a big round of applause, joining us on stage sponsoring this award, Jim Clark from Suez presenting the award for Waste Reduction and Recycling. Thank you, Jim. Good to see you, thank you very much for your support, Suez. This award was open to any organisation or individual who has taken an innovative approach towards waste reduction, reuse, recycling or upcycling. It's great to be celebrating the efforts of these two nominees who are doing so much to prevent valuable resources being wasted. The nominations are Mid Suffolk Voluntary Organisation Forum, Red Gables. And joining you in this category, Still Good Foods. Let's have a little look.
The Volunteers of Stone Market Project supports local people of all ages to undertake environmental activities and initiatives across Stone Market. The group holds a monthly litter pick throughout the town and encourages local people to recycle items through a twice monthly terracycle store. Launched in October, the group now facilitates the Stone Market Repair Cafe. Volunteers of Stone Market provides opportunities for people to contribute to meaningful projects that have a positive local and global impact in a way that also benefits the volunteers.
We are working hard to support Suffolk to become the greenest county by reducing the environmental impact of food waste. We saved over 40 tonnes of edible food last year and made sure it was redistributed to our local communities in Suffolk instead of being thrown away. This included over seven tonnes of local farm produce, which was still good to eat but uneconomical to harvest. We organised teams of volunteers to collect this produce and distributed it to the public and to other local charities.
Fantastic, well done to both of them. Here you go, Jim, do you want the noise with it? And the winner is Still Good Food. Wow, congratulations, congratulations. I'm coming to the person holding the trophy. Wow, how does it feel?
Oh, so exciting, amazing, so pleased, thank you.
And the stuff that you rescue and you save, it's perfectly good, isn't it?
Oh, absolutely is, yeah, it's all about food labelling and it's about people using their own initiatives and smelling, sensing, not being governed by the labelling and it's something that's really changing and our customers are getting so aware about how we're helping the planet as well, which is a wonderful thing to see, so yeah.
And are they doing the sniff test now as they go home and check their own produce?
Yes, they certainly are, yeah, they are.
My mum would be very proud, she did that all the while, we didn't have dates when I was growing up. Well done, and how long you've been going?
We started in, we opened the shop in August 2017, so five and a bit years and yeah, it's just been fantastic, the work we've all done together, been a brilliant journey working with lots of other groups in and around Berry and the farmers and individual businesses and fair share, it's been wonderful.
Well, congratulations, well done, Still Good Foods. The judges said they're making a significant impact on food waste reduction and helping people source good food in times of rising living costs. They also like the work they're doing with gleaning from farms as well as their school outreach work. Well done, congratulations, Still Good Foods. And could you please keep applauding for our highly commended Mid Suffolk Voluntary Organisation Forum, Red Gables, come and join us. Well done, guys. Brilliant, well done. Many, many congratulations. Our next award is Enhancing Biodiversity and Landscape. And would you please give a big round of applause, our award sponsor Suffolk Wildlife Trust, Christine Luxton is here to present the award for us. Thank you once again for your inspiring speech earlier on, it was really, really good. Now, it doesn't get more important than work to protect our natural environment, whilst we need to support habitats and wildlife for their own sake, we shouldn't forget, they literally support our way of life. They deliver clean water, healthy soils, they protect us from flooding, pollination for crops, as well as providing people with that vital contact with the natural world which is so important to our own mental health. And you mentioned how important that was when we went into lockdown earlier on, you know, that connection was palpable for people, wasn't it? So let's have some noise for our nominees in this round, Anglia Car Charging. The Long Melford Biodiversity Group. And Suffolk Prickles Hedgehog Rescue. Let's hear more about them.
Anglia Car Charging focuses on effective charging infrastructure, enabling electric vehicles to become the viable, sustainable form of transport. We are working towards minimalising environmental impact, from the green electricity we use through cycling, the cars we drive and our passionate support and care for nature and wildlife. The offices are situated at Brumbeck Meadow in the Weyney Valley. We took our land out of agricultural use and have dedicated it to nature. Our mission is simple, to restore and support the natural regeneration of the low meadows and seasonal wetlands which provide a thriving habitat for wildlife. Only time and surveys will tell if our approach is making a difference. We hope it will also inspire others to have a similar mission. Each new project helps nature and that has to unite Suffolk in having a greener, thriving landscape.
We are the Long Melford Biodiversity Group, a group of approximately 40 passionate volunteers supported by our parish council. We've been in existence for two years, undertaking work to enhance our two local nature reserves, clearing and creating new wildflower areas, planting trees and hedges around the village and putting up bird boxes, owl boxes and over 40 swift boxes. We are encouraging everyone, particularly our children, to welcome nature into our lovely village. We are proud to be doing our part to make Suffolk the greenest county.
The survival of hedgehogs depends on our understanding and commitment to making positive changes to our behaviour. Suffolk Prickles aims to change people's attitudes to their environment and the profound effect they have on it. This is achieved by our talks and educational workshops, we reach over 400 people annually. We also advise community groups and relief sites how to green up their spaces. We communicate best practice in our newsletters and adoption programme and we are planting up an exemplar wildlife garden because we are so passionate about saving Suffolk's hedgehogs and making Suffolk the greenest county.
Wonderful nominees, big round of applause please. Oh come on, you can do better than that, come on.
And the winner is Long Melford Biodiversity Group, well done.
The Long Melford Biodiversity Group, come and join us. Oh, it's a long walk, keep going, keep going. Fantastic, been going just, what, two years? Amazing, who's going to have the, we've got holding the trophy, always the one holding the trophy, it's a better, two years?
Two years, yes, I mean, we are just a very small representation of the huge number of people who volunteered a lot of practical time and encouragement to the rest of the village, we're just the apex, there's a lot of other people now following our lead and as Christine was saying about one in four, I hope we're reaching that and we will continue to do so, so thank you very much for awarding this to us.
Well, I think it's fantastic what you're doing and sometimes, as I said earlier on, it can be really quite daunting when you think about what's happening in the world, but we can make a difference, can't we?
We can and we've just got to each do our own little bit locally and it all adds up to something important.
Well done, you'll be celebrating when you get back to Melford then.
We will indeed.
Congratulations, well done. Let me tell you a bit more about the winners, the winners impressed with the reach and impact that they've achieved considering how recently the group was formed. They've created a variety of habitats, creation and undertake much maintenance work involving a wide range of members of their community. We're excited to see the impact that they will have on their community, their landscape and local wildlife moving forwards. Brilliant, well done. And would you keep the applause going for our other nominees who are also brilliant, Anglia Car Charging and Suffolk Prickles Hedgehog Rescue. Come on, Paul, a big grin. Fantastic. Well done. Now, we're getting towards the end of our awards. We've got, as you can see, two more to go. Our next award is green tourism. And would you please welcome onto stage Richard Hunt from the Suffolk Growth to present the award for green tourism? Come on, Richard. I have to be very careful when I introduce Richard because we used to go to school together. He does, that's the worry. It really does. A new category this year, which looks to celebrate the ever-growing tourism sector in Suffolk. We love to welcome visitors to our wonderful county, don't we? And we want to celebrate those businesses that are doing their best to minimise the environmental impacts and also educate and inspire their guests whilst they're here. It's always a delicate balance for us, isn't it? We want people to come and enjoy what we have, but it's really important they don't spoil for future generations what we have. So the nominations are Ivy Grange Farm Barn. The Food Museum. And the Friends of Thornham Walks. Just before we open up that envelope, let's have a little look.
We're the Food Museum in Stowe Market and we're proud to be supporting Suffolk to become the greenest county. As the guardians of 84 acres of farmland, woodland, river meadows and parkland, we have engaged visitors through our exhibition programme, community allotments and sculpture trail, and worked alongside local partners to improve biodiversity and make the countryside a place everyone feels comfortable in.
Friends of Thornham Walks is a community group which supports Thornham Walks achieve its principal aims of enabling public access to green space and improving that green space for the benefit of the community. Projects include working with local primary schools and other community groups to plant new woodland, to create wildlife areas and restore natural habitats for the purposes of education and enjoyment, and to design new projects like the Enchanted Wood, which honour and celebrate icons of our cultural landscape, such as this ancient oak.
Here at Ivy Grange Farm Barn, we've created a beautiful environment for guests to make holiday memories with a minimal carbon footprint and to quietly educate about the importance of our natural surroundings. Building on our ethos of sourcing locally and living sustainably, we've added 24 solar panels, batteries, EV charging point and LED lighting, with a pickup service from the local station and electric bikes to borrow. In the three acre meadow with nature trail, guests can share our passion for creating quality wildlife habitat.
Ladies and gentlemen, our nominees in green tourism.
So really, really delighted for Suffolk Growth to be supporting the Green Tourism Award this year, as you've seen some wonderful nominations and some great activity going on. But there's only one winner and the winner is Ivy Grange Farm Barn.
Ivy Grange Farm Barn. Congratulations. Well, congratulations. It is a real balance, isn't it? To encourage people to come here, to enjoy what we have, but also to make sure that we protect it for future generations.
Our passion is really the nature trail and developing the land for nature. That's what we really love. And the barn enables us to do that and being able to share that is just wonderful.
And the reaction when people arrive and see your passion?
Oh, the kids absolutely love it. Yeah, absolutely adore it. Yeah.
And the green bikes are popular, I guess, are they?
Green bikes popular. So popular, I even got one myself.
So how busy are you though?
We've only just started this year. We ran a yurt campsite for a long time and we've just developed the barn. So it's a new project, but we're doing pretty well.
Well, it's fantastic what you're doing. It really is. Congratulations. Well done. Our winners, the Grange Farm, Ivy Grange Farm Barn. Well done. The judges said they're strong in all areas, have been taking significant actions to reduce emissions, enhance biodiversity and promote visitor engagement in the last 18 months. Their innovative engagement with their guests to explore different aspects of sustainability during their stay was inspiring and they have a practical implementation plan for the next steps in their sustainable journey as well. Well done. Ivy Grange Farm Barn. And would you keep the applause going for our highly commended, the Food Museum and the Friends of Thornham Walks? Well done. Well, it's time for, as you can see on the table, our final award this afternoon. Would you please give a big round of applause? A big supporter of the Greenest County project, Nicola Beach, the chief executive of Suffolk County Council, to present the award for green hero. We've already seen many green heroes today, but this award is different. Our 10 nominees have already been recognised by friends and colleagues for their hard work, expertise and commitment. We have now publicised all their great work and opened up a public vote in which over 2,000 people have taken part, which is amazing. So Nicola, over to you.
Thank you very much, Mark, and good afternoon, everyone. It's an absolute pleasure to be here to award the, the final award of this afternoon. I'm very pleased and in awe of the achievements of these 10 green heroes that have been nominated. And it's great that so many public participated in voting for them. Just to give you an idea of the combined achievements of these champions of the environment, I'd just like to share a few facts and figures about what they've collectively achieved. One, over thousands of bags of litter collected and recycled, over 7,000 nest boxes made from recycled or locally sourced wood, countless children engaged in the value of protecting our natural environment via free books distributed to schools, setting up forest schools and activity centres to promote learning outside, huge amounts of waste diverted to reuse with repair shops, food share schemes and swap shops. Trees have been planted, habitats protected, extended and enhanced. And campaigns have been started to reduce pesticide use and protect our water quality. Just the flavour of, of the activity that these people have undertaken. And to do justice to the breadth and depth of all of their achievements would take us, I think, into the early evening. So I won't do that, but it just gives you a sense of the breadth and diversity that they've achieved. If I'm, I'm sure if we asked any of them to talk about their achievements, they will undoubtedly point towards all the other people that have supported their work or their groups and their communities. But therein lies the real value of these green heroes. They are motivators, they are instigators and they bring people together and give them purpose, direction, results, in better environment for us all. So before I announce the winner, who's been judged by the public of Suffolk and received the most votes, I want to say thank you to each and every one of our 10 heroes who are making Suffolk a better and greener place to live. Let's give them all a round of applause. However, as has been said many times this afternoon, there is only one winner and it's with great pleasure I announced that the winner is Jason Alexander.
Thank you so much, everyone. It's been an absolutely wonderful afternoon and it's a little bit different standing up here than sitting down there. But I would just like to say, you know, congratulations to, to everyone here today, whether you've, you've won one of these or been shortlisted. It's been absolutely brilliant afternoon. But, but I'd also like to say that I spent a lot of time working for the environment and, and, and sharing ideas and, but I couldn't, I couldn't do that without, without my wife and, and son over there, but particularly all the volunteers that, that join me every week and such as the Chancery Wombles, Fresh Air and Friends, Kesgrave Wombles, the Bridgeward Wombles, the list goes on and on, the Alexander Wombles. I'm bound to have forgotten, well, I definitely have forgotten some, but absolutely brilliant. I'm absolutely thrilled to, to win. And I'd just like to leave you with this thought. Don't worry about how other people make the world worse, just worry about how you can make it better.
Let me just, let me just tell you a bit about Jason. Jason's commitment to tackling litter across the county is second to none. In the last year alone, he has walked 34 miles during a 24 hour litterthon to raise awareness about the issue, supported by 50 volunteers and at the same time raising £2,500 for a cancer charity. His Blitz the Butt campaign has now removed 1.2 million cigarette butts. Jason, don't go away. Jason, stay. Don't run away. Don't run away. Stay there. He's completed over 300 personal litter picks, played a role in 40 public ones, filling 900 bin bags, recycling everything that he can, inspired and cajoled so many volunteers and other organisations to become involved, like Ipswich Town, Ipswich Borough Council, Suffolk Libraries. His ability to engage people with the issue is a really special talent. From inventing characters, well, I didn't recognise him today in his suit. I've seen him in the past as Maurice the Dogpoo Fairy. And, and some, what was the dinosaur called? Litteraptor, that's right. Yeah, Litteraptor. A bit like Bernie Clifton, wasn't it? Back in the day with his thing. His ability to engage with people is just second to none. He's also developing a vintage litter museum. And some of the stuff you found has been really ancient, hasn't it? Really, really ancient. It's incredible what, what, and it just shows how long it stays there. I mean, it's frightening, really. You think, oh, look at that, isn't that exciting? But then you think how long that's actually been there and it's, it's incredible. His seemingly limitless enthusiasm to clean up Suffolk makes him our 2023 green hero. Don't go away, Jason. I need you to stay there a little longer. Give him another big round of applause, ladies and gentlemen. That's amazing. You mentioned them as well, and I would love our other green hero nominees to come and join Jason up here. Debbie Bartlett, Martin Cant, Nan Eschley, Steph Holland, Eamon O'Nolan, Millie Sandoval, Lucy Seppings, David Townend, Helen Walters. Come and join us down the front. Come on, all our heroes. You're all good friends. You can all squeeze in together. Come on, big grin. Just hold those certificates up so you can see them. Go. Fantastic stuff. Well done. Congratulations. That was absolutely amazing and a huge amount of people voted. As you can see, Nicola's joined me back on stage for one final time this afternoon to, to close this afternoon's proceedings for us.
Thank you, Mark, and well done, everyone in that category. It was great to see just the breadth of activity going on and I'm delighted that Jason won. My, my, my career just started in waste and recycling actually, so I've a long held a passion for that and anti-litter. So delighted that, but well done to, to everyone. The county council has, has for a long time recognised the challenge we have before us to tackle the impacts of climate change and enhancing our natural world. In 2007, the Greenest County Campaign started and from the very beginning, we recognised it would be a journey and with some foresight called it creating the greenest county. As an organisation, we are still on that journey and more recently, we have clarified our commitments that by 2030, we will achieve net zero emissions for our own operations and deliver biodiversity improvements on 30% of our council estate. We're also working collaboratively with public sector partners to deliver the climate, Suffolk Climate Action Plan, which seeks to use the influence of our organisations to enable business, communities, schools and householders to play their part in our journey to create the greenest county. The true value of these awards is not just to recognise all of you in the room today for the brilliant work you've done, but to use this opportunity to inspire others to follow in your footsteps. As councillor Richard Rout said earlier, we all want to live in a cleaner, greener, healthier world and your own highly motivating stories show us all how this can be done in reality. And thank you to everyone here and all those who took the time to enter the awards this year. I would also like to recognise those people who have made today possible. The judges, the experts from many different organisations have taken, given us their time to make the difficult decision between the 114 entries. To our sponsors, without their generosity and commitment to our objectives, we just simply couldn't hold this event. So thank you, colleagues, joining us today from Vertas Suffolk Building Society, Suez, Suffolk Growth, Barnes Construction and Suffolk Wildlife Trust. And a special thank you to Christine for your inspiring, rousing, brilliant presentation. Thank you to Mark, as always, for your ongoing support today and hosting this brilliantly and for being a champion of the awards over many, many years. I would also like to mention the team who've organised today's event because there's a tremendous amount of work that goes into these, into these things. And thank you to Chloe, Matthew, Sally, Kate. And thank you to Chloe, Matthew, Sally, Kate, Matt Hollis, Tom and Ben, and Paul, also our photographer. And anyone, if I've missed anyone, please forgive me, but thank you all for that because there's a lot of work and organisation that goes into that. Congratulations and thank you to all of those who've been involved today, all the nominees, all the winners. You're all winners, you've done brilliantly, and thank you so much. You inspire others. And as Richard said, and Christine indeed said as well, it's important we all make those little steps every day and not get too downhearted. We can all make a big difference, and you show that as well. So thank you all very much. On behalf of the County Council, it's been a pleasure this afternoon, and I hope you enjoy the rest of the afternoon. Thank you, Mark.
Nicola, thank you very, very much. You've been amazing today, well done to each and every one of you. I hope you found it as inspiring as I have. It's just, I go away with a real spring in my step, and it's quite handy at this time of the year, actually. So it's been a long afternoon, forget that one. But really, seriously, well done, and please keep up the good work. But more importantly, talk to those people who perhaps aren't quite so keen to pick up the litter. Better still, encourage them not to drop it down in the first place. You know, be proactive. We really, really need to think about each and every one of our actions and encourage others to do the same. So well done, you are ambassadors and you are brilliant. We do have an opportunity to take a winner's photograph of everybody. So if you've won, would you please remain behind? We'd like to get a big winner of all of you. There is opportunity to get other photographs, should you wish. We've got a couple of screens here, so if you want to get those special shots on your phone or anything like that, feel free to do that. It's time to go and celebrate. There's drinks and nibbles now being served outside in the foyer. Please drop your badges off because we need to recycle them for next year. But please stay, network, talk to each other, enjoy each other's company and feel inspired. And please, for all of you, give yourselves one big round of applause because you're absolutely amazing, well done. So winners, if you'd like to come down, the rest of you can pile in and go and get a drink if you like, or come and have some photographs down here, but the winners down to the front, thank you.